This conference will now be recorded.
All right. It is six thirty-three. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And if everyone could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Commissioner Nutbrock is not here but excused. Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Here. Commissioner Keeler is absent but excused. And Commissioner Smith is also absent, excused. I don't think I missed anyone. Jesse had us spoiled when she did the roll call. At this time, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from our December twelfth meeting.
I'll show move on second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the December twelfth Planning Commission meeting minutes. Any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the December twelfth Planning Commission meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you have one, two, three, four. What's unanimous for the approval of the meeting minutes, that motion passes. Thank you very much. At this time, let me move on to one dot five, which is public comment. And let me just check with you, Brian, really quick, if we had any comments that were written in or any voicemails. Okay, great. So we go to the, so we go to the folks in the room. At this time, if you have a public comment, if you can keep your comments to three minutes, please. And we don't have the mic set up. I'm wondering if we can give them. Okay. Okay, I might be able to.
I don't know how much slack.
See if I can do it without pulling it out of a system somewhere.
Probably it.
All right. Or maybe Ethan. Should be a little bit more. Yeah.
This one has a.
Oh, okay.
You know, this is the only time in the meeting where it takes. Generally, people look at the agenda. And they've come because they see something on the agenda. On, on the website, on our city website. And generally, they would read that. And if there's something that they see on there, that there's interest to them, or they want to put, make some input, then during public comment, they would say, yeah, absolutely. Love to have, yeah, we're glad you're here.
Go ahead.
Sorry for the interjection, but one thing Planning Commission could do is, if there seems to be interest in opening another public comment period later on during the meeting, or you could even switch this one in your, in your agenda to be, to be later.
Yeah, we can, we can reopen it. I think it's, I think it's set up in the earlier part of the agenda. So if someone wanted to make a comment and then didn't have to stick around for the whole meeting, I think is why it's early. But by all means, we'll just open it up again. And the reason why we scrambled for the mic is I just wanted to democratize access and make sure I wasn't stifling the voice of the community. We, we, we don't tend to get a lot of people here, so we're, we're just happy to have you. And we wanted to give you a, a mic if, if you so wanted.
And, and the meeting's being recorded, that's why I would use the mic.
Yeah, and that's why we're adamant about the mic, so that the public would be able to hear your comment.
Also online. It's just the center. City in the center?
Yep.
Yep, on page, yeah.
So if someone would remind me to reopen a public comment, maybe one more time at the end. We also don't have any public hearings this month for one dot six, so I'm going to go ahead and pass that one. Ethan, am I handing to you or Alec for help on our unfinished business for the needs assessment and strategy?
It will be me, Commissioner Alkushari. So I will be discussing the second draft of the HNAS, or the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy. So the purpose of tonight is to deliver our second draft and provide key updates since our first draft that we delivered to you on our December Planning Commission meeting. And the second draft addresses comments provided by the Planning Commission that, on that first draft from December, and includes updates from additional research, review, and recommendations by staff, and also new information received from Clark County since that December draft. And so I'm going to go through a few of the key updates. And then the main focus of the, this topic of the second draft is to go into the conclusions or recommendations section of our HNAS, because that was embedded fully from our first draft. So now we have more information analysis that we can actually provide some key conclusions and recommendations to the Planning Commission and the city.
Alec, can you be a little closer to that mic, please?
Yeah.
Oh, then we're.
There we go.
And Alec, I'm just going to interject really quickly, sorry. Because we have some public here that wasn't here last month. Alec is talking about the, what we're calling the HNAS, which is the Housing Needs Assessment and Strategy, which is part of the city's comprehensive plan update. So every 10 years, a city is required to update its comprehensive plan, which is its 20-year growth plan as part of that. The city of the center and most jurisdictions in Washington are required to do a housing needs assessment that looks at how much housing is needed to serve the next 20 years, what the existing conditions of the housing in the center are in terms of who uses that housing, how much it costs, things like that. And then that informs our comprehensive plan updates. So I just wanted to mention that, so you know what we're talking about.
Thank you, Ethan. This mic doesn't work as strong as that one, it seems like. So the first item I want to jump to, so I'm going to make you hop around a little bit, Brian, in the document. If you go to page twenty-one, which, in this agenda.
Is this twenty-one of all the packet?
The whole packet, yeah, the entire packet. This would be in section two point one point two of the HNAS, which is the historic population growth rate and changes. Commissioner Nutbrock had a couple of comments here about our growth rates. And if they are compounded rates, the first instance here where it says 4.95% from nineteen seventy to or, yeah, from nineteen seventy through today, in 2023. I can't recall what the exact number was, but it was slightly less than the 4.95%, because it was a compounded population annual growth rate. We are working with an economist within WSP, and she verified some of these numbers. So we updated to this from nineteen seventy to now to 4.95%. And then she verified other instances where we're using the same rates throughout to double check that our math is correct, and she confirmed those. So we updated that. The next major update was to section, section three, which is the workforce profile. So that starts on page thirty-four. All of this comes from the U.S. Census on the map data, and they released new data in November 2023, right when we were wrapping up this first draft of the HNAS. So we updated that entire section of the workforce profile in this to have the most current data. The biggest takeaway from that is, in the previous dataset we had, there were seven hundred and sixty-six jobs in the center. With this update in November 2023, it shows that the center has eight hundred jobs. But basically, all our findings throughout that were previously, from the old data to the new, essentially mean the same. Another item that changed was the how much jobs pay in the center. And actually, the share of jobs that pay greater than $40,000 slightly increased versus the previous dataset. But still, our key findings from previous showing the center is generally less than Clark County with rates of pay by the, because they do buy three different categories. It's less than $15,000 a year, fifteen to forty thousand dollars a year, then forty thousand or greater. Those are the three income segments they look at. So that fluctuated a little bit, but the biggest change was that there's eight hundred jobs in the center and not seven hundred and sixty-six. And then another comment was made about our structure age and new housing units by type. So this would be in section four point two four. If you go to page fifty-one and look at figure twenty-five, scroll down there, we updated this to include OFM data and also completed building permits in the center through 2023. So not issued building permits, but building permits that have been completed, AE, occupancy permits. These are, they've gone through the whole process, and people can actually live in these units by now. So we've updated this to include that data. So since 2020 till through 2023, there's been four hundred and thirty-five units constructed. And this includes the Riverside Apartments as well, and the previous data did not include that.
And on the Riverside Apartments, I'm assuming that means the units are each apartment, not just?
Yeah, each, each apartment within the complex. So there's a hundred and forty-four total units throughout all the apartment complexes. Yes. And then if you go to the next page, Brian, this talks about the different types of housing constructed through this interim. So if you scroll to the bottom of that table there, you can see in 2023, two more housing units, which would be those apartments. We had a hundred and forty-four added, which substantially increased the amount of two or more housing units constructed in the center from 2010 through 2023. Because before then, there was maybe, at a rough guess, maybe twenty-two or more units constructed in the center. But then in 2023, that number grew substantially, has a greater share in the total share of housing units built from that time. And then.
Question, Alec. At some point, should that be broken out as a separate category, apartments? Because obviously, skews the.
Yeah.
Housing units, because people don't usually think if they say housing, they don't really think that as an apartment. They don't, that it's an apartment complex. And so.
Yeah, the reason we have it this way is this is how the OFM, the Office of Financial Management, through the state presents this data. And so we had to keep it consistent with how they present it as well.
That's coming down from their format?
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
One thing we could do, however, is add a note. Since we have local knowledge that all 144 of those units are apartment units, we could add a note to the bottom of the table that says, you know, in 2023, the 144 units are all apartment units, based upon local information or something like that.
Okay, yeah.
One other, just out of curiosity, on 2020, there was a negative four, when something was torn down, I take it?
Yeah, it's, it's, doesn't explain specifically in the dataset what that is. But that's what you can assume is that something was taken down and redeveloped potentially, yeah. And then if we go to sections six point three point six, this is page sixty. I won't go into too much detail here, but this is where we provided the Housing for All Planning Tool, the HAPT that we discussed in December, as provided by Clark County. And so this basically assigns, and again, I'll go a little more detail later, but it's, Clark County is giving the center its share of the housing to accommodate through 2045, and they have to accommodate by different income segments. And per, in this HNAS copy, listener needs to accommodate 2,765 housing units. But again, that'll be discussed later in tonight in the agenda, so go more in detail later. And then lastly, for the key updates, six point four point two, which are the housing unit type projections. And that's on page.
Could you just repeat? So you, you stated how many are needed by 2045?
As of now, and again, we'll go more detail later. But 2,765 housing units total are to be accommodated in the center by 2045.
That's what we have.
Uh, no, that's what we need to build out through 2045.
Needs to be built yet.
Yes.
When you take a look at the population growth.
Right.
The number of people per house, that drives the number of houses.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then lastly, these updates, for the key updates, is six point four point two, which we'll look at table twenty-six and page sixty-seven. Our economists made some projections based on high and low forecasts for housing units in the center, basically making assumptions made by the county-wide population projection. So the pop, currently, the county has a population projection of 718,154 people by 2045. So she was using, her economists, a percentage of what the center's share of the current population is of the county-wide population and making projections based off of that. And she was making projections by different housing types, because it's required by GMA to project by different housing types and also income segments. So the HAPT tool, I'll be discussing later, is by income segments. And then here, we're talking about different housing types. So you have manufactured housing, multifamily duplexes, townhomes, and institutions, which are group homes and foster care facilities. And so these tables here show different forecast models for that to accommodate those different housing types. Any questions before I move on?
Are you finished with this one?
This topic?
Yeah.
No, not quite yet. I'm going to go into the conclusions or recommendations.
Can you scroll up to four, one, one, just up a couple pages? You know, the, the number of people per dwelling unit is pretty important to this, because that drives how many new units we're going to project need. And Clark County uses 2.66. If I remember right, in the last comp plan, we were forced to use that number, even though ours was significantly higher. Are we going to be forced to use the county number or going to use our own?
I believe we'll have to use the county's number, because all the allocations they're using throughout the whole county, assigning to each, each city is based off the county's number of 2.66.
Okay.
It is, it is lower than what the center's is. The center's about 3.02, I believe.
Well, if you use the OEM data, OFM data for 2023, we're at 2.68, so we're right in there.
So I'll go into, just double check, there's no more questions before I move further. So we go into the conclusions or recommendations section. If you scroll down to, sorry, I was using what Jamie did last time, was with each attachment, so I was prepared for that, so I now have to renumber my pages, my references. But here in the recommendations and conclusions, before we go into the recommendations, I'm just going to highlight the key conclusions we had in our analysis. And these key findings were that there's a lack of housing diversity. And as you saw through the HNAS, a large majority of our existing housing stock, which is also obvious here in the center, is single-family residential. And a lot of these single-family residential homes are, three bedrooms or larger, and are in a larger lots. And then next is a lack of housing affordability. So since these are, there's more single-family residential, and it's a large stock of the existing housing supply in the center. Therefore, these are more expensive homes more generally. And also, if you see in this, in the HNAS as well, we compared the center's housing prices to like the county level. And pretty much in every level, we were substantially higher than the county. And then the next item is jobs and housing imbalance and a lack of living wage jobs. So the jobs-to-housing ratio in the center is 0.55, and the county's target is one. And so that means we have way more residents than there are jobs in the center. And then the jobs that we do have here aren't super high-paying. So that's a key takeaway. And then the last item for the key conclusions is the center's housing market and regulations likely have racially disparate impacts. And part of this HNAS and for GMA compliance, we have to look into see what are those racially disparate impacts and exclusion displacement within our regulations and zoning? And in our findings, there wasn't a whole lot about race in the dataset, but what we could find was that non-white households were typically more cost burden than white households in the center. And so we have to look into what we can do to undo those impacts.
Alec, can you go up one, back up the page, one back up once, please? Keep going just a little bit more. Okay, those two items say lack of housing diversity and lack of housing affordability. What? What determined that that was lack of housing or lack of diversity? Who makes that determination and how is that? Are we off by some percentage, some, what, what, those words are those, whose words are those?
Those are just findings we found through this analysis.
Based on what?
Based on data from what we got from the U.S. Census, but also per guidance. We've been taking guidance from, we have guidance documents that we refer to from Commerce. And based upon that guidance, we have to accommodate for those different income segments from that Housing for All Planning Tool, HAPT, and other datasets showing to accommodate different income segments, you have to have different housing types to accommodate very low, severe, extremely low, low, and median household income types. And if you don't have a housing variety or diversity, it's hard to accommodate those different housing or those different income segments.
Well, I just don't see anything you're showing us that says this is in order to be not calling lacking, but what are we, how much, how much are we missing the mark here?
So.
Were you able to determine that?
Every community has some variety in it, right? I mean, there isn't like a defined level of housing diversity. But if you look at that main data point right there for a lack of housing diversity, it says that seventy-seven percent of the center's housing units constructed from 2010 through 2023 were single-family detached homes. If you compare that to Clark County, Clark County is about 65%. So what we can say is that comparing the center to other communities, that that, that that's a really high number. And I think is, you know, is, that's something you're familiar with in driving around the community, right? I mean, the predominant amount of housing stock is single-family detached residential. So as Alec was saying, the city is obligated to accommodate a range of different housing types. That's what the state of Washington says that the city has to do. So that's why that's, that's why that's important.
So you're saying that in Clark County is kind of the driver, then, based on their numbers, then we can extrapolate what our numbers would be, using that as a, as a point of reference?
It's a basis of comparison. We didn't look at a lot of other jurisdictions. I mean, we can tell, I can tell you from doing these types of studies before that the seventy-seven percent, which is just 2010 to 2023.
Right.
Is fairly high. And the community more broadly, if you look at what that paragraph says right there, is that, you know, prior to, this isn't, this includes prior to 2010, 84% of the housing in the center is single-family detached. So that, you know, raises it even more than that. So that, that's what we're using on that one.
So at some point, is there, do we then determine somehow to get a better, instead of saying lacking, that we are adequate or we're good? Or we, something that's, we'll do or talk about that says, how do we get a better score, so to speak?
Good question. So if I'm understanding your question, you're, you're asking, what are the things that we need to do to achieve better housing diversity?
Yeah, right.
Or, or are you saying, is there a target we need to like aim for? Is that what you're asking? It's like, is there a certain number we need to target for?
It's lacking a, it's lacking a D, and we want to get a B? I don't, is there?
I mean, there's not a certain target that we're going to set up. You know, that's not a requirement from the state. But Alec's going to talk to you about some of the things that we're recommending that the city do to try and increase housing divorce, diversity and affordability here in a couple of minutes. With no particular or no certain target in mind, just increasing the diversity, because we know it's, it's concentrated on single-family detached.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one other thing I'll add, and Ethan can tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, the state and the, the data that we have to work with is we're looking at the land capacity that we have and how that land is zoned. We do have to accommodate different, your housing that supports different range of incomes. So while we can't, you know, make someone come build that type of housing, we have to, through our zoning and through our planning, be able to accommodate that housing. So, you know, again, it's, you can kind of, we're trying to lead the horse there.
Yeah.
And then we'll see if it drinks, I guess.
If I'm understanding, part, part of this is driven by the state of Washington's codes of, of what is to be typical of cities or municipalities of our. All, all of it, right? So the state, since 2020, has put in place a lot of requirements that if you were on the Planning Commission in 2016, maybe none of this will sound familiar, because back then, there were no specific requirements to address affordable, affordable housing, increase the diversity and, and types of housing that are available. And now the, the city's not only required to analyze that, like we're doing here in the HNAS, but also to take adequate measures to address, address these issues. And that's where our recommendations are going to come in. But Brian's absolutely right, that we have to find ways to accommodate housing of, of a variety of, you know, available to, that would be available to a variety of incomes. And again, I'm learning so much here. Is that what you called the Growth Management Act? Is that what that is? That's a key part of the Growth Management Act now. That was what was adopted in 2020 by the state. Since 2020, and I'm not, I feel like 2021 was the housing-related ones. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. So I'll go into our summary of recommended tools and strategies based upon these findings to accommodate, to make the, to make the city code and zoning to accommodate these different housing types and income segments in our community. And so the first of these are regulatory tools. And if you go to page seventy, there's a range of these here, and the first of these is a density bonus. And I'm not going to go into every single one here, because we provided quite a few, but I want to give some examples. So for instance, a density bonus would be providing a developer, if they come into the city and want to propose a development, there would be some sort of incentive for them to have a, if they provide affordable housing per X amount of their development, they would have an incentive to increase their density for providing that, that X amount of affordable housing. So, and then another piece of that, if they are providing that affordable housing, they would have to set a guarantee of maybe 10, 20, 40.
they would have to set a guarantee of maybe ten, twenty, forty, fifty years of that housing that is affordable to remain affordable um, for the community. Um, so that's an example of a density bonus to encourage um, more affordable housing to accommodate those different income segments. Um, another recommendation is rezoning. So within our H N A S, it shows that there's a lack of available land capacity for certain housing types, especially for multi-family and duplexes and basically anything other than single family residential. And these are likely, these multi-family or duplexes uh, are likely housing types that are more affordable to extremely low to moderate income households. Um, so if we allow some rezoning within the city of maybe considering more land for M D R or residential professional or mixed use to accommodate these housing types that could accommodate those different income needs. And then we've also recommended a series of different code changes. So we did an audit using a adequate provisions checklist. Um, that's also attached to the H N A S and we audited the existing listener code to look at different ways we could make the city's code more amenable to actually provide these different housing types. Um, and so for instance, uh, one item is increasing building height. Um, in the M D R sixteen zone, it limits building heights up to forty five feet for multi-family, which likely doesn't allow like a typical four story apartment building with a six to twelve, six, twelve pitched roof as required by the code. Um, so you can look into increasing the building height and or adjusting that pitched roof requirement as well. Another item is looking at increasing maximum density in some of our zones. Um, for instance, and this is something we're aware of is in our M D R sixteen zone. Um, it allows apartments, but um the set density at fourteen dwelling units per acre, which believe our code up to actually made that to sixty units per acre. Um, is not enough to accommodate a typical three to four story apartment in um, the center. And so our recommendation is increasing maximum densities in zones such as M D R sixteen. And then um, another
Excuse me, can I make a comment on density? I, I would suggest it's probably time that we consider a high density zone as opposed to increasing the density on our medium density. And the reason for that is that we have, we have a high density zone and we have better control over where that high density zone is located as opposed to just making M D R greater. So I, I would encourage you to include that as a recommendation. I don't have the rest of you guys feel.
Any idea on where you'd place it?
Out there by you.
Tim and Landing or something?
I would think we would push it to the outer bounds of the city. Maybe Tim and Road, certainly the junction would be a place to do that. And maybe eventually on the south side of listener road.
Yeah, I think we had mentioned the lack of a high density zoning before, and I think we were in agreement that we would just ferret that out. So this is recommendations you guys are giving to us. So I think that the key here is to just keep that in mind for our deliberations internally. So
Question on that is Dennis, would that, it would be considered that we'd be looking at smaller lots and potentially smaller homes? I'm thinking more of higher dense. I don't think you could do that with, with single family homes. It would have to be multifamily to get the higher density. So, you know, four story apartments, you know, the apartments we have in Riverside. If the density far in excess of what our code now allows. So if you want to continue building those kinds of apartments, you need a higher density code.
And I think Dennis is recommending we have this adequate provisions checklist showing us all of the different things that could hold us back from being able to build these different types of things to meet this. So uh, if we're gonna work off that checklist and start thinking of modifications as we move forward, that checklist as a basis to consider a higher density zone itself rather than uh, increase the density of the medium density zone. Just the rec- recommendation in place just because it kind of applies to the checklist and not but still just listening to the presentation, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and another item I want to talk about just briefly is concerning the high density zone as well with our, when we're gonna briefly discuss it tonight is um, some preliminary population allocations from the county. And part of that is if there's some need to maybe expand the U G A or preferably the state has in the state law, you're looking at alternatives from, you look at your alternatives before you actually expand your U G A. So an alternative would be considering like upzoning or creating new zones to accommodate um, higher density apartments or housing um, to prevent or to limit the need to actually expand U G A, but keep your density and development within the U G A before you actually look at expanding that. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind as well.
Have you guys done any work to see how we're doing?
That's the later agenda. Yeah, that's the third agenda item tonight. Yeah, I was just, that just triggered that thought. Piece of my mind and I wanted to bring that by, but we'll go more detail of that later. But I'll power through these recommendations really quick. Um, so I want to jump into some of the financial tools that we looked at as well. And these different financial tools were used or found through Commerce Guidance that they've provided um, when looking at your housing needs assessment. Um, and so a couple of these I'll just go through. Um, the first is a housing and related services sales and use tax. And it basically would have to be a tax passed by voters. And these, again, these are just uh, recommendations to consider looking at and creating um, more avenues for affordable housing. Um, so it would be a sales and use tax of up to point one percent to fund affordable housing programs to serve households with incomes sixty percent or below of the average median income. And if you do do this, these funds must serve those households. Um, A with that sixty percent or less average median income and also serve individuals with mental illness, veterans, senior citizens, homeless families with children and um, other groups um, as outlined in R C W. So there's pretty specific requirements for this, but it is a means of creating an avenue of, of building more affordable housing. Another Sorry, I just want to reemphasize something. Um, there's a lot of different financial tools available for jurisdictions to use. We didn't know which ones of these would be politically palatable or not, or we wanted your thoughts and input on this either tonight or at a later time, but we didn't want to automatically take some of these off the table. We have a feeling that some of these would be controversial with the community. But we wanted that to be your recommendation um, discussion and decision, not ours. So that's why we're putting some of this out, out there. So you know it's available, um, you know, to, to look into and as a tool to to use, but we're not saying absolutely the city should do this. As Alex said, the city should consider some of these things. Yeah, just wanted to make that clear.
Let me ask a question, that first one where you say a, um, you know, levy of fifty cents. So the city collects a pot of money. How, how do you envision that money being used for projects serving low income households? I mean, it's, there's not going to be enough money there that city will build a project. So I'm not clear how those funds would be utilized.
I could jump in. Um, so from my understanding on the levy, um, it would essentially, you'd have that pool and it would be again, it'd be the city's pool of money and it would be the city providing and developing these low income or affordable housing in the city and maybe not necessarily they can build the whole development on their own, but they could possibly put X amount of that pool money to incentivize a developer to build affordable housing or um, any other ideas, Ethan? Well, so the Vancouver Housing Authority is the sort of regional affordable housing provider. And even though it's Vancouver, they do serve other communities around Vancouver. And so if the city you know, was interested in attracting an affordable housing development to a center, it could put some of those funds toward, toward that from this source.
Yeah, I think if, if we are going forward, that kind of recommendation, we ought to have some assessment of what how much money that kind of levy would bring in to know if it would even have an impact. I don't, I don't have any idea what our tax base is to make that judgment.
I have a question. So we're just touching on this tonight. We don't want to dive into asking questions about the different uh, opportunities, the revenue opportunities, correct? We're just, it's just a just a touch and go.
I mean, we're here for, for some questions, um, but I guess to maintain a reasonable schedule and agenda tonight, you know, if you feel like you have a lot of questions or whatever, it might be better for us to either punt that to the next planning commission or um, you know, sit down with, you know, one on one.
There'll be a chance to deliberate and examine those different things before we apply it anywhere where it counts, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, this isn't gonna, none of this is written in stone.
Right.
So th- these would be recommendations that would make their way into a policy statement or recommendation in the comp plan.
If, if they make it through, if they make it through the comp planning process.
Yeah, right. So I guess Jeremy, there's gonna be plenty of opportunity to see.
Yeah.
How much of all of this has to be completed with that comp plan? Would you say we should have a pretty good idea where we're headed by the time we get to?
Well, this probably likely be a somewhat unsatisfactory answer, but the uh, city's obligation, again, there aren't specific targets. The city doesn't have to adopt a certain number of these tools. It, its comp plan has to contain adequate provisions to further housing diversity, affordability, racially disparate impacts. So it's going to be up to the planning commission and their recommendation to the city council and the city council to determine what is, is adequate to um achieve greater housing diversity and affordability, for instance. So I'm just gonna go into one or two more of these, um, so we're not just to keep on schedule for the night. Um, but the another item we were looking at was linkage fees for affordable housing. And so it's kind of works like an impact fee. Uh, so essentially when a developer comes in with commercial or residential development, they'll be charged a linkage fee. And that fee goes directly to pool for affordable housing. Based upon square footage of the structure. Um, and so that's just another means of collecting a source of uh, funds to develop affordable housing within, within the city. And again, it kind, it would kind of work like that levy as well, potentially. Um, but that's just another financial avenue as well. And then there's um, some simpler ones out there uh, such as impact fee waivers. So maybe an affordable housing developer comes in and uh, the city could optionally allow to waive up to a hundred percent of impact fees for that affordable housing because impact fees can be a large upfront cost and could discourage affordable housing from actually coming in within the city because those could be quite substantial depending on the size of the development. And then um, also fee waivers for water sewer connections could be another um, means of limiting upfront costs to affordable housing to uh, of coming into the city. And then um, any further questions before I?
Yeah, do, is there some guideline or something that comes down from the state or county that somehow says, uh, this is the number that we would recommend or shoot for as being an affordable housing number? Is it like eleven to twelve hundred square feet? And we're looking for affordable housing that would run somewhere between twenty, two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollars? Something, is there something like that? Because if we're talking about building affordable housing, it must it's got to somehow fit into some kind of a a box. And I'm not sure what that's box, how high it is or deep it is or wide it is.
Yeah.
But is there anything like that where we talk about affordable housing? In my mind, is someone gonna say, oh, you're talking about a house that's two hundred fifty four thousand dollars? Is that, is that an affordable house? I would think today in this community, the answer is yes. In our community today, if you had a home that was on sale for, for sale, two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, you'd say, okay, that would be affordable in, in this environment today in our, based on our current home uh, prices. But is there anything that, that the state or the county that says, okay, we're looking for here's what that needs to look like in order to fit into a thing called affordable housing? Is there anything like that?
Um, from my understanding, there's nothing in that black and white out there. And, and unsurprisingly, but we have an idea based upon, so we have our area median income. And so that's a set number, I believe is ninety something thousand, Ethan?
What's the AMI for the center?
We, we've done some of this analysis in the, in the housing needs um, assessment and strategy. And so as Alex said, it is based upon area median income, which is around ninety thousand dollars. Um, and that's for Clark County. Um, and, and those are, um, area median income um, is used to determine what affordability levels are. So the question is not so, not so much what type of house is affordable or how large of a house is affordable. Affordability is a question of income um, as it's defined by Washington State and the federal government. So a, a household cannot spend more than thirty percent of its gross income on housing uh, for it to be affordable. Um, if it goes above that number, the studies show that, you know, people start um, reducing the other things that they spend uh, on like transportation and food and clothing and that, and, and those types of things. So based upon that area median income number, we can project or, or say what is affordable to somebody that has zero to thirty percent of the median income, thirty to fifty percent of the median income, fifty to eighty percent of the median income at those different bracket levels, which are those brackets that, that in essence, the state requires us, us to, to use. And some of that analysis, a lot of that analysis is contained um, in this, in this um document. So we can pull some of that up with you um, again and go over that. Um, but it's, um, you know, we, we, we know what some of those uh, house uh, costs are that somebody could afford in, in those categories. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Alec to add on to that by um, pointing you towards some of the sections in the report that, that talk about this and we won't go over that in, in detail right now. So we want to pull up those sections that? We'll just point them to the section that they can look at. Yeah, that would be section um, six point four point one, which would be housing unit type gaps. And there's several tables in there that show um, units available by different income brackets. And it goes by um, owner units and rental units. So look into section six point four one. I believe that's where most of that analysis would be located.
Well, six point three two is
Six point three two.
Is housing affordability.
Yeah, there's that as well. They're in two sections. But Dennis, to But Dennis, to Commissioner Hill, sorry, to answer your question, just as an example. If ninety one thousand dollars is the area median income. A monthly payment, if you have a hundred percent, if you make a hundred percent of that. Of that, so you make the ninety one thousand dollars, you can afford two thousand two hundred seventy five. Dollars in house payment per month. But if you only make. Fifty percent of the median income, they can only afford about approximately one thousand one hundred. Dollars in house payment per month.
Thanks, Ethan. Thank you.
And they no longer make a one thousand one hundred dollar house product, so.
And I think that can span rent or mortgage. I I think it's just the cost of housing.
Cost of housing.
So.
There are a lot more costs of housing than just a rent or mortgage rate too.
Right, and that, that, that's a good point. So that includes all housing costs, utilities, every insurance, everything that goes with. With that, not just the mortgage itself.
Property tax.
Sure, and just since you're familiar, what's, what's the renting cost out there Riverside?
It's about seventeen fifty, depending on the type of apartment. There's like two bedroom and then. But then there's like fees that you can't really get around, like they have like mandatory. Like waste disposal, like you couldn't just say, hey, I'm going to take my stuff to the dump. So there's like, in, in, so all, all in, you're really close to about nineteen hundred.
Thank you. So for. So for our last piece of this is we have some recommended goals and policies. And so just to briefly go over these really quickly, essentially these goals and policies. First go into. So basically, our first goal is the listener should provide sufficient land for housing for a variety, variety of income ranges. From extremely low income, so that's zero to thirty percent area median income to moderate income. And then our policy recommendations are essentially that the city should audit and revise its code. To eliminate these barriers that we've identified. To allow for more affordable housing to be developed within the city. Consistent with our HNAS here, and then that the city should also implement financial incentives to. Accommodate affordable housing. As to determine through our twenty two twenty four HNAS. And then the next goal we are recommending is the listener should zone land in proximity to employment locations. For compatible and affordable residential uses. And a policy out of that would be that the city would zone land in proximity to downtown to accommodate a variety of housing types. Which include attached single family, multifamily and ADUs. And also reviewing the prohibition on new housing in the downtown commercial zone. And so just exploring that. And then the last goal that we're recommending is listeners should work to eliminate racially disparate impacts. That resulted from past policy regulatory and investment decisions. And again, the policy out of that would be the city should review and revise its code to eliminate codes that have. Any discriminatory effect, including, including such as an oversupply of land zone for a large lot, single family development. So again, just allowing different housing types to allow for different types of people and income segments to be. Make the space, make the environment and market more viable for to accommodate those. Types. And then. Essentially, it's next steps. We do have a joint workshop scheduled with the City Council on Wednesday, January twenty fourth. So two weeks from tomorrow to discuss the HNAS. And other components with the comprehensive plan update. And. We'll discuss that more in detail, including these recommendations from. The HNAS that I've discussed tonight.
So. What time is that meeting?
We're starting at five, correct?
Five here?
It's a comment on that first goal. I, I'm not sure how realistic it is to expect that we could attract. Low income households out here. Because I envision those households are the ones that are very dependent on public transportation, which we don't have. You know, we don't have any of the low income services out here. So I, I, I think that's probably. An unrealistic goal. So just for what it's worth.
And our recommendation again is what Ethan's been reiterating is we have to make adequate provisions, not necessarily. That we have to make it happen, but we have to allow and show with our code and our amendments that we are allowing. This kind of market rate housing to come in at low income rates, but. You know, again, we don't have a set target.
Okay. And then the second goal, the idea of. Allowing single family, multifamily, ADUs in the C one. Downtown commercial. I, I think that goes counter to the plan to expand the downtown area. I mean, if we start letting. More housing get in there, then you're taking away from the commercial properties that you're hoping to expand into.
Yeah, actually, what our recommendation there was looking at within proximity to downtown, allowing ADUs and multifamily. And then it's like a separate piece of that is look into reviewing prohibiting any new housing. Yeah.
You're right, I misread that. Sorry.
Any other questions?
Looks like we're. We're good. There, I think you had two, two more. Parts to cover. Or was that appendix A and?
And next is Ethan, he'll be talking about the visioning process with the comprehensive.
Oh, okay. So sorry, that was appendix.
Yeah, we're, we're completing the HNAS unless there's anything else.
So how many, how much, how many more times are we going to review this before we put a nail in it and say? This is the data we're going to go forward with.
We would have done that by now, but we've. Been waiting for the last update of information from the county. To include in the report on residential land capacity and and the city's allocation of housing and population. So we're trying to keep it as narrow as possible, but. We think that the county is going to still be updating some of their numbers in in February, so we'll have to tweak the report. We have preliminary, yeah.
That's actually why you guys got that note from me, checking to see if we could do this on the sixteenth. We were hoping to. Stall a bit so that you guys would get the numbers and bake it in, but then we didn't have. Good turnout, so we, we just kept it. We, I think you guys just used the preliminary numbers and we just kept the date for tonight.
Right after we were asking you the question about moving the meeting. You came back and we, we decided it wouldn't be a good idea because we wouldn't have enough planning. Or very many planning commissioners next week. The county then came back with their preliminary numbers, which we've included in that third item. Tonight, then we'll talk to you about that. So the vision item, you may or may not know this, but there in the city's comprehensive plan, there is a. What's called a community vision. And now that we're sort of wrapping up what we're calling the existing conditions work on the comprehensive plan, which is essentially auditing. The comprehensive plan that and that, and then talking to you about. The housing needs assessment and and strategy, we're in a good place to start working on. Update, actually updating the comprehensive plan. And there's, you know, as we've talked to you about in the past, there's quite a bit of work to do. And updating the comprehensive plan specifically this year in in twenty twenty four. So. This is really sort of intended to be more of an interactive session. With you and we've kind of summarized what the existing. Community vision says in the comprehensive plan, but because so much is, we're anticipating so much changing over the next. Twenty years, all these new state requirements that we've been talking to you about, housing, climate, transportation. In addition, the center is going to be getting quite a bit. More new growth and, you know, in the form of housing units and population.
You said new growth?
Yeah, new growth. So we thought it would be a good time to check in with you. On the vision, I'm going to try and be as quick as possible. About this, the existing. Vision, I'm, I'm just going to kind of highlight that for you a little bit. It talks about the character of commu- of the center and. It talks about maintaining the small town atmosphere. Having safe walking and to a variety of places in La Center. It talks about providing housing of all types for all incomes and life stages. So that's basically what we just got done talking to you about in the. Housing needs assessment. So that, that sort of idea has been in the comp plan, you know, since at least twenty sixteen. It talks about having. A job market that's economically. Independent, you know, so the center kind of has its own industries and commerce and so forth. Happening, and that would happen through a vibrant downtown neighborhood, commercial areas and home offices. It also recognizes that the casinos and the card rooms will continue to play a role in the center's future. It talks about Tim and Landing being a, a place where those new jobs will go as well as at the junction. And it talks about adequately planning for public facilities to accommodate. Population and employment growth. And then lastly. The vision talks about living in harmony with the natural environment and protecting critical areas. So as you think about that, as you think about the housing needs assessment and. The growth that the center is anticipating. As you think about the things that you know about the community because you live here, the things that you've heard. From other people that you know who live here. We want your thoughts on how you think that the vision should be updated. And and so the vision includes sort of, there, there's kind of three key questions when we talk about the vision. What are we now? So what do you understand that the center is right now? What is its character? What is its essence? What stands out to you about it? Where do we want to go in the future? And then lastly, how do we get there? So I'm just going to kind of open it up to you. We can do a little bit of a brainstorm here for a few minutes and then move on. To the next item. We're going to do kind of the same exercise with you in the City Council. On the twenty fourth, you'll have the advantage of having had this session and been able to sort of gather your thoughts. On this issue and then kind of project some of those to the, to the City Council about what you think. Because you'll have had a little bit more time to think about it, but. So I'll just open it up on those three questions and then try and prompt you, you know, as, as, as needed. With some further questions.
I was going to interject really quick and just let the commission know. That Brian is doing the same thing with a select group of citizens. I, I think. Maybe it would help if, if we understand that Ethan's doing this with us now. In that general citizens are are doing this through the CAC.
Yeah, so specifically for the Tim and Landing in downtown sub areas, we have sort of a, a focus group of citizens and business owners. That are helping guide that vision and then, you know, we'll also be coming to the planning commission for some. Hands on the helm as well as we sort of start to get a direction going.
Yeah, and so that was, I think, one of five meetings that you launched with them, and I was actually invited to that. To that, so I, so I am kind of there for us, but let me not slow this down anymore. So. Going back to Ethan, just feel free to throw anything out.
You know, we, we hear a lot about this small town atmosphere and I'm, I'm not sure what that is. And I would suggest it would be worth using some of our community visioning sessions, maybe the CAC. Or I think there's, the comp plan has a. A community visioning session that we probe and understand what the citizens. Think a small community atmosphere is. What elements do we have here that are, that are small community? And that they want to preserve. I, I just find it hard to, this, they like small community atmosphere. Okay, what is it about our community that is small? Community atmosphere and how do we maintain that? If that's one of our objectives. So I, I would encourage us to try to ferret that out when we're talking with some of these community sessions.
That's a, that's a great, great input. Thank you.
Two, two lane roads and independently owned businesses and things like that that make it feel that way, right?
Could be.
And some of that is more the feel of just. Community itself as a whole. I mean. That the whole Holly Park experience and people come into the games and. Just as support, I mean. I, I remember our first year that there was actually a tree lighting that when we were there, to me, that was a small town community feel. Oh, it really did come together. I thought it was in a Hallmark movie, you know. It, it was, but, but that's kind of the feel though of just. We care about our neighbors, we care about one another. That, that's kind of the mentality that, that it kind of relates to.
Now, just more by clarification that. The first summary that you gave us, that was all coming out of the two thousand sixteen. Long plan, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, and then, so we're looking on how. What, what's there that we want to maintain, but what's, where are we now and what do we want to project?
Right, how would we change that vision for the next twenty years of, of growth? Oh, one thing I forgot to mention at the beginning of this is. The vision is kind of this very ethereal thing, you know, like what is this? Why is it important type of thing? Why, why are you talking to us about this? Well, it sets the stage for the policies. And the comprehensive plan and the policies in turn set the stage for the development regulations. And help determine where the city needs infrastructure and where it invests. Its, its public resources for, for roads and sewer and parks and, and that, that sort of thing. So sort of at the end of the chain of, of all these things, it does have an effect on how the city spends its. Its money in the, in the long term. So I think that we've ta- oh, we've talked a little bit about what the community is now. What do you envision it to be? In, in the future. Obviously, Dennis had that, that comment, Commissioner Nutbrock had that comment about. Well, we should kind of survey the community about what a small town. Atmosphere is, but as you think about new growth coming in, you know, perhaps four thousand or so. Residents and Alec will talk to you about this in a little bit. Where should that growth go? What type of growth? Should it be? What type of public facilities are needed to accommodate that? What kind of jobs go? Along with that, those are just some thoughts and seeding questions I'm trying to. Get out there as you kind of think about the, the future of the center. Are there things you want to see? Are there things you definitely don't want the center to? To be in the future?
Well, when, if I look at your questions that you have here about existing landmarks or geographic features. Obviously, the, the most obvious feature we have is East Fork of the Lewis River. And we hear a lot about people wanting more trails. And I think that ought to be one of our focuses is how do we leverage? That East Fork River. And put trails in that allow people to come here, want to come here and hike or kayak. You know, on the south side of the river, we've got all that Clark County land that, that we ought to be. Working with Clark County to figure out how we can. Expand the trail over there. You know, there's supposed to be a trail down here around the center bottoms, but. If I try to hike it, you run into brush pretty quickly. Below the school, you know, there's an opportunity there for a large loop trail. So I think we, we ought to look at that, that feature. The East Fork of the Lewis River and decide how do we leverage that? To make this more of a destination. You know, that picture on the wall over there starts to do that. But I think that's our strongest resource, natural resource that we ought to be using somehow.
Would you, sorry, just a quick follow. Would you, sorry, just a quick follow-up question on that. Would you say that that's also a true statement, not just a recreation, but a development in terms of, you know, maybe future development should make more of an effort to face the river and-
Absolutely. Yeah.
I mean- But not obstruct the river, not to, to any great extent. I mean, I, I know the development, particularly at Timmin Landing will be partly there, but I, I do agree very much on that. That's our, one of the biggest resources we have. That was the thing, again, I can just go back to when we first came four years ago, but it was just coming down the hill into the thing. I said, oh, this is it. This is what we want to be, you know? And, yeah, and so it is a great feature. I, I would not want to have that, the whole thing. I, I know that the growth at the junction and then out, Timmin Landing, it needs to develop, but I would, I would also hate to see it completely solid from the junction all the way into town of all buildings. I mean-
One of the, when we were doing the, the junction plan, one thing we put in there was a provision for view preservation. The idea of orienting this, this, the wide pedestrian street facing Mount St. Helens. So you, you had a street that encompassed that view. And I think we can, we ought to be striving to do that. We were talking about the same thing over Timmin Road when we were looking at potentially putting together a master plan was how do we preserve the views that are inherent up there? And I think at one previous meeting, I mentioned the idea, we ought to be putting a trail around that, you know, insisting that developer put a trail around that butt bluff so that there's a pedestrian walkway around there that provides that view over the, over the wetlands.
So Ethan, we can kind of throw anything out to you?
Yeah, absolutely. Anything, recreation, jobs, residents, views.
I feel like I'm cheating because I get to talk in the CAC meeting as well. So I already inundated them with my endless political leanings. But um, one of the things I had mentioned is that if we do, if we do do the investments downtown to make it beautiful and we have this vision, one thing is the downtown is, is disconnected from other parts of the city where it's, it's hard to get here on, on a bike from, let's say, the post office, because you do, you run out of the bike lanes and they open and close. And then even going to Riverside, i- it's not wise to get from Riverside to downtown with anything but a, a car. And so that's actually me repeating myself from the, the CAC so that i- if we were to make this downtown nice, to, to find a way to, to open it up for pedestrian, you know, even mobility scooters, bikes, strollers to, to just be able to safely get here, especially for bikes that don't want to be on the sidewalk.
Alternative modes of transportation to downtown.
Yeah, especially the downtown where it just seems like it's, it's almost like the, you know, it's like the heart and all the arteries are, are tight.
Jeremy, I know you, Commissioner Smith, any thoughts going there?
I'm just, you know, soaking that in. It sounds like we're almost even more walkability, that like when you say the post office, I can imagine, you know, you might ride a scooter or something, but you might just walk and that, that could even be a challenge, right?
Yeah.
Things are changing there as well, so.
Yeah, you can walk it nicely because there is the sidewalk, but if you're on a bike, you, you feel kind of bad taking the sidewalk down because, because you, you could hit someone or force someone to step aside. Generally, I try to, well, I don't use it anymore, but I, I was that guy, right? I would get, I would just jump off the sidewalk into the street so that people walking would feel safe. But yeah, so, you know, so, and if you're in the bike lanes, you have to, you have to leave the bike lane and, and reintegrate with the street traffic again. And at certain times of the day, you can do it blindfolded, right? But at other times, you have to watch yourself and, and then you get the bike lane again and then you lose it again. And so you're doing this constant dance in and out of cars. And then you feel bad because I just can't, there's certain parts that you can't do 25 miles an hour, you know, especially uphill on a bike.
I guess, I think about, I think about policies. I think about, you know, if we want to have a future for La Center, we're thinking about businesses and jobs and larger sized businesses. I think about the junction more so than the downtown in that regard. I know that when this previous vision was written, that was prior to us completing the junction plan. And so I think that the words there still support, because they're very vague in general, the words in the vision. I guess I, I'm a little unclear for wanting to focus on how to change those vision statements or we're diving a little deeper, but I mean, the vision statements are pretty, they're, they're general enough that I think they still apply for the most part, but to dive in, I think we just got to be really mindful of our, our policies, be open-minded, think outside of the box when it comes to being up at the junction. I know that our development that we have with minute management that's looking beautiful was part of a, a pre-negotiated situation and it seems that they've been really good supports, almost play into what we had visioned even after the fact. But moving forward, the old fudge, the old 3B, the aggregate crushing site, these different areas that are up there. You know, the junction plan was this huge undertaking and I know that there's some thoughts to, to revise that to some degree, but even expediting some micro revisions there, recommendations to City Council for types of revisions, rather than conditional uses or temporary uses or variances. Yeah, variances, but really policy changes that encourage the business up there. I'm not the type of guy who gets on the bike or walks around or what I think about the city and where we're going to be all these years. I think that, you know, I look at Ridgefield, they've got a beautiful industrial area, freeway frontage areas, I believe are very valuable when it comes to light industry employment. We have that casino across the freeway over there. It's a big destination. Just trying to play into those different things, you know, I think are going to be really important. But I admire what they've done in Ridgefield. I admire even what they've done in Cowalts County and Woodland. I admire what they do in different areas with the industry, the light industrial. So I think of those things, but I know that in order to achieve that in Timmin, in order to achieve anything like that at the junction, you have sewer. And with the latecomer agreement with the set, with the challenges to have developers achieve, just developing, let's say, an employment campus type or a light in, let's say a, what do you call it? A flex space, like a, you know, like a, a commercial flex space, just to develop that in its own with some of the environmental impacts is challenging enough. And then you tack on achieving sewer and water, the latecomers agreement, the different things, just if, even without the latecomer agreement, just the fee associated with getting, getting sewer to your site down that road. So I'd love to see the city investing its money in the infrastructure. I think that would create a lot of opportunity to have it ready to go, whatever those pump stations need to be, whatever those things need to be. Sewer, I don't think water's as much of a challenge. I think sewer, sewer is, you know, going to be critical for us to, to attract that type of growth that we're looking for. And I don't know that it's practical to rely on mega developer that can afford to bring it all the way down the road. I think we may have to put some in the bill, but thinking earlier, you know, with the checklist that you went over for the adequate provisions, some of the fee waivers for sewer and, and you get to thinking, okay, well, that can only apply where the sewer is, but then if you have a credit for a sewer fee, then who's going to pay the latecomer thing? Is the city pay that? And then it makes me think of all the fee reductions and how does that apply? How does that really help us to reduce the fees? Where do we, you know, we are achieving what the state wants us to achieve, but how do we recoup that as a city to make ends meet or to make the money we need to make? So I don't know, there's a lot that should be done, I think, in Timmin and at the junction. And I don't have anything against the downtown development. I don't have anything against any development, but I really feel like the city needs to hyper-focus on, on the areas with the opportunity for the new commercial developments.
Thank you. Any other big picture thoughts? And then any thoughts on the last question there about, if you, if you have any thoughts about how to achieve?
Let me just piggyback on, on Jeremy's comments. You know, in Ridgefield, we see a lot of warehousing going in and I hope we would not succumb to that because that is very low employment density. You know, there's not a lot of tax revenue that's generated from that. Plus, we've got very limited land out there at the junction and I'd hate to see us put a, a low employment density kind of business out there. The other thing I'm afraid of at the junction is since they are individual parcels out there, that we may lose the vision that we had for the junction. You know, you have one landlord is going to come along and he's going to want to do whatever he thinks is best for his piece of land without somehow us enforcing that larger vision that we have for the whole junction. And then the same thing applies out at Timmin Road. You know, we, we didn't, we didn't get a master plan together in time. You know, I think we all had a vision for what was going to go out there and certainly, you know, a huge apartment complex wasn't what I had in my mind.
Right.
It was a MX zone that had a mixture of employment and residential. And, you know, with that apartment complex going forward, losing that opportunity on over half of the property out there that was available to do those kind of things. So I, I guess the, the policy kind of question is how do we, if we get these sub-area plans, how do we enforce them when we've got lots of individual landowners that want to do something? I'll leave it at that.
I'll follow up on that as well. When we did the junction plan, we had a beautiful vision, proud, all flowed together from La Center Road in all directions. And there is the challenges with the smaller parcels, the different landowners. And that's why I think we may want to strongly consider, south of La Center Road, opening up some opportunities for town general area there and maybe letting go of a little bit of this sort of grand entrance towards the south and just accept it towards the north and down into the big city, because that's where the big views are. That's where the, you know, that's where the 3B, the fudge, the minute man's room and stuff up there is. And then maybe the land a budding La Center Road should be a part of that walkability and the grand, the grandness, but maybe as you head a little further south to the frontage area to expand the opportunities or even, even, I just have this vision in my mind of the renderings of how that all looked. And I think it's very, it could be difficult to achieve the further south you go and it may be in our better interest to, to let the market bear what, what needs to be there, rather than having it abide all the way south with, with this vision for this walkability for pedestrians and things like that up, up there specifically south of the road. We may need to take a closer look at the junction plan, you know?
As a relative newcomer to the area, is it, where do we see like the junction plan and the, and the Timmin plan and like the new downtown core plan? Where, I'm assuming that's accessible or is it, but were those dreams of the past that are kind of just sitting undeveloped?
Well, the junction plan is inherent in the, in the code, the, the development code for the JP zone. That, that's where that vision and code is that, that resulted from that vision.
Okay, so there's not like a storyboard of that vision, say, or a summary statement?
No.
There is a sub-area plan document that was generated. The code really mirrors that. I would say, I mean, the code is essentially sort of just the overall sub-area vision, sort of just codified, you know, with sections added. So, you know, if you read the code, you're, you're getting probably 99% of, of it, including the graphics and everything, but that both are available.
Okay. What was the firm that did the, that helped us with that?
E squared, I think.
Well, Eric, but also they brought in-
There was another company.
A larger conglomerate thing.
I forget the name.
Can't remember, but some of the renderings and things they had, it sticks in my mind. I'm not sure if that's in the comp, in the plan that you-
If you could find it, yeah, that would be great.
I'm for, I'm forgetting the name too. It was there and then you said you forgot it and then I forgot it.
On the tip of my tongue there, yeah.
Yeah.
But they came in and, yeah. You know, we, you don't always nail it the first time. Had some time to think about things.
That's the company that came in and suggested the area south of the junction where they could put a, uh, businesses in there. That would be conducive to coming in from the south also and entry in from the south as well as coming in from the north. But it was mostly a office, office type complex.
Well, I think you might be thinking of the Columbia River Economic Development Group or Council. And I was, I'm thinking of, I was trying to think of the firm that was hired to work together with Eric when we-
We, we found it here in the code. It was Kamar.
Kamar, yeah. But the, were the CREDC site, the CREDC still involved? I'd say that's some, you know, the, if we need to work together or work away from CREDC to utilize some of the land there, that might be something that, that would apply to this conversation too.
That's a, that's a good point because back when we were doing that, we had great hopes on the CRE, whatever it is, because they were the agency that was out there identifying shovel-ready property and advocating for companies to come in there. It would be, Brian, it'd be nice to know what happened to that. Because we were going to leverage their help in finding customers for that land out there.
Yeah, I think we really need infrastructure that goes down the road to serve, serve, to make it part of the city underground too, not just on the map.
Thank you for your ideas. I think there's a lot there and we took some pretty good notes. So I'm gonna call it good on that one unless there's any final thoughts.
Yeah, just one, you asked a question about pedestrian and auto-centric. I, I think we need to recognize that, that this is a bedroom community and that's just inherent in the data you showed. You know, most of the, most of the people employed here drive into the city and most of the people that live here drive out of the city. And so we're going to inherently be an auto-centric community, but we need to recognize that there are some developments that we need to make sure are pedestrian focused. That was the goal that we tried to put in place for Timmin Road. That's the goal we had for sections of the junction. So I, I think we need to recognize that we need to be both and we need to focus the pedestrian-centric where it makes sense.
And I know we need to move on. I just want to say that the town center as part of the junction plan, I see as it, it's just, you know, killing a lot of birds with one stone and all these different things, even for the state requirements of what we need to do. And really, I don't know how to encourage that now that that land is, is there as it is. I'm not sure what the plans are for it because I'm out of the loop there, but that would seem to satisfy a lot of things there. And there's that MX, they call it town center and town MX, T-Rex. Do you recall that anymore?
T-Rex.
That area, the T-Rex, I think that's important.
That was a residential.
To focus on, yeah, because it does have that residential factor. But I will just say, I have been impressed with the city over the last few years. I can- But I will just say, I have been impressed with the city over the last few years, I can't pinpoint exactly what has changed. But in regards to business owners, the tone, the vibe, the comments that you hear, I know the city. Has to be headed in the right direction because we seem to be much easier to work with, much more accommodating and. And just more of a positive feedback from from the business owners and landowners and people that I know. Compared to some of the frustrations of time long ago that you would hear, so I know that it's becoming a better city for businesses to come in and be successful. Something good is happening.
All right, thank you again, I'm gonna, well, you're the chair, but Alec is next.
I'll just take it and hand it back to Alec, I I think Alec, are you rolling into one eight two county allocations?
Yes, I am.
All right, take it away.
Okay, I'm gonna try to do two things at once here. So I'm going to be pulling up the VBLM, just the vacant buildable lands model that is. Provided by Clark County, so we've been working pretty closely with Clark County. On developing the yield assumptions and these, this vacant buildable lands model report. And essentially what a vacant buildable lands model is assesses the amount of vacant and under underutilized land. In each city by each of its zones, so here you can see.
In acres?
Yeah, in acres and so here you see like for downtown commercial, I'll zoom in a little here. I'm not going to go through each zone, but you can see here for like downtown commercial. For vacant or underutilized land, there's two gross acres. And then they account for constrained, which this says zero, constrained usually. It's for environmental constraints, so like critical areas like streams, repairing buffers, wetlands, et cetera. So for this example, there's zero and then they do a market factor, which they also zeroed out here. And typically for infrastructure, they deduct for infrastructure and this is more apt for. Especially larger parcels, I believe for residential parcels or residential residentially zoned land. They'll deduct about thirty percent of the land automatically for infrastructure needs. And so therefore they resulted in one buildable acre in the downtown commercial zone and. That generates twenty two jobs because and I'll show you the yield assumptions table as well. But in the yield assumptions table and our commercially zoned lands, they assume. Twenty jobs per acre of land, so obviously they're rounding here, one times twenty, it would be twenty two, so there. Must be rounding to twenty two, because there's probably maybe one point two acres. So as you can see here, again, like mixed use, there's twenty seven gross acres, but nineteen of it's buildable. And I'm going to hop over to here for the yield assumptions and this is basically.
I think we should really, sorry, I think we should share the total amount of vacant buildable land. That the county is assuming. And this is in the incorporated city.
Yeah, this is incorporated.
So they're assuming that there's one thousand nine hundred and eighty three. Developable acres in the city, which could accommodate five thousand two hundred and seventy five. Residents and two thousand one hundred and thirty four. Jobs and that's the incorporated city only and they have a separate number for the unincorporated UGA.
So does does that buildable, I mean, obviously they subtracted out to twenty five or thirty percent for infrastructure. Does that also include those lands that are not buildable hazard areas, flood areas?
Yeah, the constrained number that they have here accounts for environmental constraints.
And then as example, the junction plan, it says there's. Hundred and thirty one buildable acres. I I didn't do the arithmetic here, but. Those three hundred ninety two homes or housing units, is that assuming you're putting those on all a hundred and thirty one acres? Or is there a mix there between residents?
Yeah, that's what I was showing next with the yield assumptions with the MX zone as an example, but for junction plan. It shows here in the yield assumptions in the junction plan area for the buildable lands. They count twenty five percent of that land is for residential use and the other seventy five percent is for employment or jobs. And so that's how they calculate this on that and that's, that's why I was going with the mixed use, just to show how they were determining mixed use, but. They do something similar at the mixed use zone as well, that eighty percent of the land is for residential use, the buildable land and twenty percent is for employment. But once you incorporate the incorporated part of the city and then UGA together. In this vacant buildable lands model, in total. There's two thousand one hundred and forty eight units that could be accommodated within the total UGA. For five thousand seven hundred and thirteen residents and then total employment or jobs is two thousand one hundred and thirty four. For whatever reason, they don't provide a total between unincorporated or within the UGA and incorporated in this table. And we had an Excel spreadsheet, those a lot of numbers to look at, so I don't want to throw that in front of you, but it added those together, so. Again, those numbers are two thousand one hundred and forty eight units that are, that could be accommodated by capacity. Within the UGA or five thousand seven hundred and thirteen people and two thousand, two thousand one hundred and thirty four jobs. And then the next piece of this is the. Housing for all planning tool and this is where. The county, let me see that here.
While Alex pulling that up, this is a tool that the state requires will center to use and the county inputs the data based upon their. Projections of of population in the future. So in this example here, it says in that blue column, the leftmost column that. With center will have two point three nine percent of the twenty forty five county. Incorporated population. So that then through this kind of black box spreadsheet that the county gives to us, which. Sorry, that the the state gives to us generates the number of units. That they're allocating to the center.
And so that number is.
This two thousand seven hundred and sixty five total, then they break it down by each income segment. So you see zero to thirty percent here. So for example, for non PSH, which is permanent supportive housing, so non PSH. Would just be market rate housing, be three hundred and seven units and then PSH housing would be a hundred and eighty two units. In that zero to thirty percent income segment, then you go up to four sixteen for thirty to fifty percent of AMI. Four twenty two for fifty to eighty and so forth.
Twenty years from now.
Yeah, through twenty forty five.
These are the totals.
Yeah, yes, and a caveat in this two thousand seven hundred and sixty five. Is that they're projecting based off of twenty twenty housing numbers, so it didn't accommodate for what we've built. From twenty twenty through twenty twenty three and so that's the piece of this, that's, it's a little tricky too because. It's hard to know, there's no way of really knowing, we could assume. What income segments those four hundred and thirty five housing units that were built from twenty twenty to twenty twenty three are, but it's hard to. We don't have real in time information to distribute across these income brackets, but we can make an assumption that. Yes, four hundred and thirty five housing units could be deducted from this two thousand seven hundred and sixty five.
So if that says we need two, two thousand seven hundred and sixty five new home by twenty forty five. Pardon me?
That's the four hundred and thirty five that were built the past three years.
Oh, okay. And our vacant buildable lands model says we have room for.
Two thousand one hundred and forty eight, right?
Pardon me?
The vacant buildable lands model says we have room for two thousand one hundred and forty eight.
Including the UGA.
Right, we're about two hundred short than one example versus the other.
Yeah, one hundred and sixty five units short.
We're close, yeah, and it's a lot closer than we were thinking it was going to be.
Yeah, me too.
But there is a, there is a shortage there that we have to try and figure out how to accommodate. Either by expanding the urban growth boundary or. That that's option A, expand the urban growth boundary, option B, rezone. Option C, direct that growth to another community. And so. Or D, all of the above, some combination of all the above, so. We have a meeting tomorrow, for instance, with the other cities in the county in which we're going to talk about. Who who wants what, do you, are you a buyer or are you a seller of of units? And Vancouver may have capacity to accommodate more housing units than than. Clark County is allocating to them, we as planners don't have. The right, I guess, if you want to put it that way, to assume what will center as a community wants to do. But we want to talk with Vancouver and the other communities tomorrow and say. Hey, you know, in theory, if La Center wanted to give up some of its growth and housing units, would you take it? And then depending on what their answer is, we can come back to the planning commission and the city council and say. Do you want to take all of the growth that the county is allocating to you or do you want to try and direct some of it elsewhere?
When you bring that back, could you also bring, here's the potential benefit or risk versus reward of each. Depending on what you chose to do so that we can understand that better?
Yeah.
Simplified.
Right, we can talk about that and at a sort of a qualitative level, pros and cons. Type of allow, type of a discussion, obviously, we're not going to like make projections about, hey, if you have this many residents. That type of stuff, but yeah, we can talk about some of the pros and cons of accepting more or less growth.
Yeah, so are there some things, if 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 some of those units were given off to Vancouver, whatever. Is there an impact on us that's detrimental?
Somebody's going to look at this video twenty years from now and they're going to say, it was them, they said. I I don't think I would characterize it as detrimental, right, because we're talking, we're talking about two hundred units over. Over twenty years, so I wouldn't characterize that as something that's a detrimental decision.
Have we ever done this before? Is trading, trading process?
This allocation process.
Have we ever done that before?
In twenty sixteen, there was an allocation process, but it wasn't broken out by income. Like you you see up here, the different housing income levels, affordability levels. And it wasn't broken out by unit types like we did in the housing needs assessment, it was just one number. Total number of housing units needed and we compared that to vacant buildable lands available. And made sure that we could accommodate that and we were done, we didn't have to talk about incomes and affordability, we didn't have to talk about housing diversity. Any of that stuff, all of that type of stuff is new since twenty twenty one. And I don't know, I I wasn't involved in the twenty sixteen update, but I don't think that they. They talked with the other jurisdictions about where to direct growth at that point in time, they they might not have had to because they may have had more than sufficient capacity. At that time.
Does it somehow get us off the hook a little bit with the state requirements or does it impact that we still have to make reasonable accommodations adequate?
You mean if we direct growth somewhere else?
If we direct growth somewhere else, can we in our policy? Somehow.
Give them the low income.
Adequate provisions for the diversity and affordability, does that somehow? Change the expectation if the county is, is changing for what the state wants us to do? Within the county, we've agreed to.
It would, it would be reduced proportionally by the two hundred units, but it's not going to go away and you can't sort of like. Fundamentally change your mix to say, hey, listener is going to do a hundred percent and above area median income and. Vancouver is going to do zero to fifty percent or something like that.
It would just be across the board with the the units.
Yeah, because I think the assumptions by the state that the county is sort of inheriting is that everybody kind of has to take. Their fair share of of affordable housing, of housing of different types. So, yeah, I don't think that that is going to fundamentally change, it would just be reduced a little bit by the total, you know, that two hundred unit total.
It's interesting.
Somewhere else.
When the time's right, I have a question, but it's about about the buildable land, it's it's an old question, but it's still part of this subsection of our meeting. Is this a good time to ask a question, with the buildable land when they. Developed, okay, here's the net acres and then here's how many jobs, here's how many residences. And we're mentioning like something two thousand potential jobs, right, two thousand one hundred or something. Does that take into effect when it is looking at the acreage? The roads, infrastructure and the parking infrastructure to have the two thousand jobs to is looking at like parking requirements and. Take subtracting that from the acreage, so then we subtract that from the twenty jobs per acre thing, it does this. It's hard to imagine two thousand extra vehicles coming in and out to work. On the roads that we have and the parking that, you know, that wouldn't be needed just for the employees alone, two thousands.
It doesn't specifically look at parking, but it uses, I can't, is it twenty five percent or thirty percent?
It's like thirty, thirty one percent.
Thirty or thirty one percent for infrastructure, whatever you want to qualify that.
And that was the pre deduct, yeah, you had mentioned that, okay.
That isn't, that is buildable for a building for job or a building to house residents.
So we can assume the streets and the parking are included in that, yeah, thank you.
So the the unincorporated, that totals up to. What does it total up to? Oh, two hundred and thirty six gross acres. The unincorporated, the UGA, this totals a hundred and twenty six gross acres.
Sorry, where are you, I'm not seeing.
I'm looking at the 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 center unincorporated, the gross acres that you total that up for. Hundred and twenty six acres, I don't, I I'm just looking at our map and I don't see where those hundred and twenty six acres are.
I mean, most of it's over here, I mean, you know, west of downtown, out where you live. And south of Riverside. So that's most of it and then there's a sliver over by Timman Landing and there's a little bit. There's a little bit south of La Center Road and north of. Shoot, I'm forgetting the the name.
Okay, I do see that.
Of the golf course and.
Yeah, in that, in the area of the golf course. So, yeah, right there. There and then I think that's most of it and then there's a tiny little piece over by Timman Land, just south of Timman Landing. So I haven't done the acreage calculations on that, but I'm assuming it's. The county did it correctly, but.
So all of that gray shading is the unincorporated?
No. No, that's, that's our city. The lighter shading there.
Is there a piece off Northwest Pacific Highway there, like north and west of the park? That that's an unincorporated.
You're pretty good at that.
Okay, okay.
Faster than me when I do that, it takes me longer.
It's like you've done this before. Okay, that, that's fine, it's close.
Yeah. And that's, okay.
Okay, well, that's, that's a lot better than I thought it was gonna be.
Very interesting.
And then Ethan's handing out, these are the allocations, very preliminary allocations that we received from the county as of today. And so these have our employment and population allocations. As we're working through this with the county, still in the early stages, but this email shows that the projected population allocation for Le Center in two thousand forty-five will be eight thousand seven hundred and forty-seven people. And then for employment or jobs, it shows that Le Center will have to accommodate for two thousand three hundred and eighty-three jobs. Again, that will be pending what Ethan was talking about earlier, potentially some of some of this might be reallocated to Vancouver to accommodate some of this growth, but we're in early stages of that, or the combination of rezoning to accommodate this, because as of now, with the housing deficit that we're looking at, that's about a hundred and eighty-two housing unit shortage that we just talked about. We also have a small deficit for jobs, because the VBLM shows that Le Center has a job capacity of two thousand one hundred and thirty-four, whereas the allocation says we need to accommodate for two thousand three hundred and eighty-three jobs, so there's a two hundred and forty-nine jobs deficit there. So we've, we have some small deficits for housing and for jobs in the center, but again, we're coordinating with the county and cities, specifically Vancouver, potentially might have a reallocation of jobs, jobs land and population or residential land to Vancouver, other cities, and/or a combination of maybe rezoning, since they might not take all of our, absorb all of that deficit, and we might have to rezone to accommodate that, or it's potential UGA expansion. There's, there's a lot of different avenues we can go from here, but again, it shows we have a small deficit, both employment and population.
So I, I don't understand the first column, twenty twenty-three population by UGA. And it has us at forty-four sixty-two, but what does, what does that column mean?
That would include all the population within the incorporated city limits and in within Le Center UGA. That's the population that they're providing there.
That's the existing population, and then the middle column is the new.
No, I, I understand that, but I'm just trying to see if that number makes sense to me, because we say the current population of the city is thirty-eight ninety, so that means there are six hundred people living in our UGA. That's grossly overstated.
Wow.
Yeah, these are numbers we were provided by the county, and we're not sure where they necessarily got that UGA number, that six hundred or so, because that three thousand eight hundred and ninety that Commissioner Nutbrock mentioned is directly from OFM state estimates. And so I was just looking at that as well, I was wondering where six hundred people are coming from.
Could be more people living in those homes than you think.
Well, I know who's living in one of them. I know my neighbors.
That is something we can look into and potentially asking the county where they get that number and how that was calculated.
It's all just projections, you know?
And again, these are preliminary, so a lot of these numbers will likely change as well, but this is just our first look, and it's our first look today, we just got this email today, seen this, so it's all fresh. Any questions? It's more of a delivery, just see. Here's what it looks like right now, and we'll keep, we'll keep coordinating with the county and keep you informed. We might, we'll likely have more information by the joint work session as well, and keep updating throughout this process, but again, it's our first look, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. I think we're good on that. And I think we were gonna, are we looking at the method A and B? I, I think we touched on it in that.
Yeah, that's just the Housing for All Planning Tool, that two thousand seven hundred and sixty-five number. There's just two different allocation methods they provide, but they both still have that total amount, it's just different ways of divvying up the housing by the income segments, two different ways to look at it.
Got it.
I think the primary difference is, and I, I'll, I'll first to say that the Housing for All Planning Tool, which was that spreadsheet that allocates housing units across income categories, is a little bit hard to understand, because there's no Excel formulas or anything behind that. They've hidden all of that from, the state has hidden all of that from us, and you know, we've tried to contact them and say, well, we've got to explain this to the community, and if they ask questions about this, and they so far haven't provided that to us, but the, as I understand it, the basic difference between allocation method A and allocation method B is that method B counts existing housing stock toward the total, whereas method A assumes that all the units needed will come from new housing in the future. So that's something we're still looking to, into, but that's what the explanation has been, that's been given to us.
A lot of them could be ADUs and, and things like that potentially as well, right? Not necessarily new, new foundations or new homes.
That's been another question that the cities have raised, is how does that factor into all this, and you capture that? Similarly, the, you know, this, this state law that's, you know, requires larger cities to be able to allow, or requires them to allow multifamily or duplexes or up to fourplexes on single-family zoning lots, you know, how does that factor in here?
Cool. Are you guys good with one eight two? Everyone good to go? Any, any final questions from Commission to Alec or Ethan? Okay. I had, I had promised that I would open up another public comments, not to put anyone on the spot, but, but if you, if you, if you wanted to make a, a public comment, you'd have three minutes if you were interested. Yeah, and if you could just do it into the mic, because it's all, it's all on the record, and we capture it all to our archives that someone will look at at twenty forty-five and say, those are the guys. And thank you for coming, by the way.
Well, I, I wanted to say thank you. My parents moved here in nineteen seventy-eight, so Le Center is where I grew up. My dad is still here, I'm here quite a bit. Seen a lot of changes in that time, and I would say from what I've seen that Le Center has grown gracefully over the years. We're fortunate to have Ridgefield, we're fortunate to have the businesses there that we do. It's a short drive from Le Center, but at the end of the day, people like to kind of get away from the city. That's what brought my family here, that's why we still love it. And we'd like to keep it that way, so when you talk about small towns and that small town feel, like you'd said earlier, attracting some of those smaller independent businesses, maybe somehow offering an incentive there, some sort of, you know, business startup classes, maybe where, where we can get people that are from here involved and, and starting their own businesses. I'm kind of looking down the road at maybe something along the agricultural line, as we're outside of the city limits, and hopefully we stay that way. But anyway, thank you for your, your planning, your careful planning, for really evaluating everything where, where we're headed in the future. It means a lot that you guys aren't just looking at the bottom dollar, right, because that is what drives a lot of cities to make the choices that they do. I am currently a business owner myself, we, my husband and I have some rental real estate, I understand that. And so I appreciate that on one aspect, but it's also nice to see that there's a balance. You're trying to integrate small town atmosphere, you're taking into account beautiful areas we have, the wetlands. We have, wasn't discussed much tonight, but we have a lot of wildlife and everything. People love being able to live here, having deer come in and out of their backyards, and once it's gone, it's gone, so thank you for really taking a look at this, appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Can you also state your name for the record? Sorry, we're supposed to add this.
I'm Valerie Post, and that's my married name, so Conti is our last name, and we've been here for quite a few years, and, and we love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I don't think we have, I'm just checking, there's no one online, so no one online can make a public comment. Thank you again. We have reports on the agenda, I'm assuming that's the community development report? Or are we, are we passing on that tonight?
If we could pass, I don't have it. Jamie was gonna give it, she's out sick, so.
Fair, fair enough, let me go ahead and roll into Planning Commissioner comments, I'm gonna start with Commissioner Nutbrock.
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm okay, nothing.
All right, I, I have one or two things. One, thank you, thank you all for a, a great meeting, that was a lot to cover in a single night. We did have a resignation come in this morning from Commissioner Keeler, and we didn't scare him off, he, he, he wanted to be clear that it wasn't our fault, but he's just gonna focus on some business and personal changes in his life, so I wish him a fond farewell, and I, and I thank him, if he's watching, for the diligence and the time that he put in. And, yeah, and so the mayor and Maria and Ryan are aware and processing and, and doing what we need to do there. And, yeah, that's all I had. Commissioner Smith, any comment?
Well, farewell to Commissioner Keeler, I liked him. Thank you to the city staff and consultants, you guys do a magnificent job.
Thank you, Commissioner Trumps.
Yeah, I just echo that, thank you for all your diligence here and trying to make it accessible. That's great.
Great. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at this time. Second, I have a move in a second, any discussion? Going once, going twice, hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That sounds unanimous to me, the motion carries. We are adjourned, and thank you again. Have to make it official.